Hello and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the planning, uh, Morro Bay Planning Commission. Today's Tuesday, January 16th, and this is the Veterans Memorial Building, uh, at 209 Surf Street in Morro Bay. Looking around, I see we have a full contingent tonight, so we have a quorum, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in a moment of silence and I'd just like to, you know, kind of direct our thoughts to our neighbors in the South and wish them the best, so, okay? All right, thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
(inaudible)
Okay, do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? At this time, we'll open up the meeting for, uh, public comment. Uh, this is the time devoted to, uh, items that are, that somebody would like to bring forward and that are not on the agenda. So if there's anybody in the audience that would wish to speak, you, you may have three Okay, seeing none, we will move on to presentations. Uh, we have no presentations scheduled for tonight, so, uh, next up is the consent calendar. We have A, item A1, the current advanced planning pro, uh, uh, planning and processing list, and it's, we're recommended to receive and file. Do we have any, any comments on that? Any discussion?
I move we accept the consent agenda. I'll second.
Okay, we have a first, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we'll move on to public, public hearings. Uh, the first item up is item B1. It's case number UPO dash four six six, and it's review of the site location. And the site location is at, uh, 545 Shasta Avenue in Morro Bay. Do we have a staff report ready?
We do.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Lur.
Thank you, Josh.
So, uh, the first item before you, um, as you noted, was the one-year review of a special use permit, uh, for the continued operation of a playhouse within the existing St. Peter's Church at, uh, 545 Shasta Avenue. Um, I would also like to note that we did receive some correspondence today. Uh, the commissioners have a copy and there are available copies on the, uh, on the table. So on January 17th of 2017, the Planning Commission adopted reso, uh, Resolution zero three dash one seven that approved the co-location of a live theater playhouse in the parish hall of the existing St. Peter's Episcopal Church at 545 Shasta. It's within the R2 Residential Zoning District. Planning condition of approval number 22 at that time required that the conditional use permit be back, uh, brought back to the Planning Commission for re-evaluation. So, uh, to date, the city has received no complaints regarding the playhouse use at this location, and, um, the applicants look to have complied with all conditions of approval. Um, the schedule for the upcoming 2018 season includes five full productions and three readers' theaters. Um, the full performances shall run for four consecutive weekends. Um, and although, uh, in the past, last year, they were, uh, there was some discussion of possible dinner theater in the, in the future, um, the applicants are not pursuing this option, um, at this point. So given that, um, they have been able to operate without issue over the last 12 months, it's, um, staff's recommendation, uh, to not require any additional review of the CUP by the Planning Commission. Um, if potential issues arise in the future, staff will work with the applicants to rectify any community concerns or non-compliance issues. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff?
I just wanted to make a comment. As, as last year, I'm going to recuse myself and abstain from participation.
Okay. Uh, do we have any ex parte communication I should have asked that? Applicants?
I do speak to Janice briefly this morning.
Okay, do you have, is your...
Yes, I, I ran into Janice briefly at the, at the post office. We didn't, okay.
Okay, do we have any questions for, for staff on this item? Okay. Uh, at this time, I'll open up for, uh, public hearing, and, uh, anybody wishing to speak to this item, come forward. Typically, the applicant first. State your name.
Hello, I'm Janice Peters, and I'm the Secretary for By the Sea Productions, the theater group that is before you with our request. Um, we've been doing really well. We've been very welcomed by the church and actually by the community as well. We had one of the neighbors come to our show and say, "I just love being able to walk across the street to the theater." So, it's actually, we've been very careful. We've been putting out parking cones for those residents who just did not want their parking blocked, and we have had parking lot monitors when the, uh, audience numbers require it. Lots of times, there's plenty of parking just right there, so it hasn't been an issue for that either. Um, we have been very responsive to any problems that would happen, and these ladies who live at the back of the parking lot, we are very sensitive to that. Um, everyone who comes in to do a show, we tell them to keep their voices down in the parking lot in the evening, and our audiences, we have a sign posted as they exit saying, "Be kind to the neighbors, keep your voices down." And the cooperation has been very good, so we really haven't had any problem. We did have a couple of barking dogs in somebody's car one night, and I contacted the ladies as soon as I got home and apologized. I said, "I'm so sorry, I went to quiet them," and they barked more, so forgive me for somebody bringing their dogs to the theater. Anyway, um, we did have, I did see the letter that they sent about this today, and we do not plan on doing any more shows than what we have on our calendar right now. This is all we can manage physically, and it's all we can manage in coordination with the church and their activities, which kind of have to take precedence. So, um, we're very happy to comply with that request of theirs. And Reverend Sid Symington is here as well, if you want to hear from him, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open it up for...
Okay.
Uh, does any, anyone else wish to speak to this item?
Hi, everybody. My name's Sid Symington. I'm the priest there at, at St. Peter's By the Sea, and, um, I just, uh, obviously want to talk in support of this venture. It's been a lot of fun, and I have a theatrical background, so it was a good fit for me, and, uh, um, nobody in our place has complained about it at all, which is great, uh, and, uh, we made a point of going around and making sure that all the neighbors, uh, you know, knocked on the door and personally met with anybody who wanted to talk about it, and, uh, it's, it's just been a great fit, and, uh, people who, uh, arrive have been, uh, just delighted that Morro Bay has a live, working theater with a real whole season and, uh, and plays going on, so it's exciting, and, uh, you know, two days after the show closes, the parish hall you wouldn't recognize, it's transformed into something like this, and then, you know, turn your back and it's turned into, you know, uh, some southern mansion or all kinds of wild stuff, so it's been great fun for us, but also, I think, a, a great valuable asset to the community, so we're glad. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Okay, at this point, uh, I'll, I'll close public comment, and do we have, um, any questions for staff or for, for the applicant?
I, I guess, uh, I just out of curiosity, I, you know, I, for one, I, I think that, that having the arts in our community here is really important, not only for, like, entertainment, but also for our young people to see that we value, uh, we value art. Maybe you can answer this, Scott, and, um, I'm not sure if they're a nonprofit or not, but you are, okay, um, what, why, why wouldn't they be able to use a vets, vets hall building to do their theater if they, if, you know, I'm just out of curiosity, you know, just...
Probably due to all the amount of events that we have here.
Oh, okay.
Several board meetings here, you know, during the week, uh, yeah, I don't imagine it probably would be very conducive to them having stages and things like that set up, and, and we're, we're, we're pretty booked in here, uh, the city facility, there's, you know, we don't have stuff going on, we run it out to the community, and so there's, there's stuff in here happening all the time, so that's probably, uh, specifically, but she probably looked at it, I don't know, um, but I would imagine that would probably be the issue, is the number of events that we have in here.
Okay, so it's the scheduling.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's council meetings, Planning Commission meetings, two-pack meetings, we have a bunch, a lot of boards and committees, and most of them meet here, so, uh, yeah, there's...
Do you wish to, can I see applicant there or not?
Okay, do we have any other discussion?
I have one thing to say. I realize that there was a, um, provision in the CUP that they could, um, serve dinner and, and cater the event in the dinner theater type thing, and I'm glad to see that they didn't, because I can kind of understand where, um, the, um, the neighbors were kind of going with, um, in their letter. They, they said something about it turning into a commercial venture, and, and we're all for the arts, I'm for the arts, I mean, it's an excellent thing you guys are doing for the young people, for the people to come watch, for the, uh, for everybody, and I just want to say I, I appreciate the fact that the dinner theater part hasn't been explored further, so...
Okay. Does any, does anybody on the commission wish to, uh, modify any of the conditions? I think they've worked pretty well, but do we have any discussion on that? Okay. Then, at this point, do we have, somebody want to put forward a motion?
I'll, uh, I'll move to continue the one-year, or to continue the CUP for one year, um, for the special use permit number UP zero dash four six six for the continued operation of the, uh, the playhouse within the existing St. Peter's Church at 545 Shasta.
Okay, let me, let me clarify. I think we were...
So, so the recommendation...
The resolution, the first resolution was...
So, we're, we're not, so there was just a condition that required us to bring this back to you? We reported back to you, we didn't have any problems, so we don't, we didn't really see the need to bring it back to the commission again. It's an approved use, the conditions stand as they are. Were we to run into issues, receive complaints, we would work directly with the, with the theater group about those complaints to resolve them, like we would with any other conditional use permit. Um, if we were unable to obtain compliance with the conditions of approval, we would re, we would bring it back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration, as you can with any conditional use permit, so, um, right now, really all we're doing is, we reported back, and if you're okay, unless you want to see it again in a year, you don't really have to do anything. There's not a requirement that we bring it back every year, we just bring it back the first year.
Do we need to have a...
So, it's, you probably, I mean, I wouldn't, unless you want to all confirm that you don't want to see it next year, that's fine. You could do that.
Well, I, I think at this point, within the Planning Commissions, we only had a one-year...
That's all.
...review, so...
Yeah.
So at this point, it goes to code compliance if there's any other problems, correct?
That's how it works, and, yeah, so you don't, you know, it's really a reporting action to you.
Okay.
Um, if you wanted to see it again, we want to see it next year, then you would tell, you should tell us that, and then we would amend the conditions accordingly and make it a yearly review or something, but there's only the one-time requirement, it's not written that way, and we don't suggest that you change it, um, because they've seemed to have been very good neighbors in the area where they operate, and we haven't heard a peep from the neighborhood, so, um, we're, we're very happy with the way that it's operating, so...
So I think we just move...
Yeah, you can, we can just move on to the next item if you want.
Close the item?
Unless you want something else.
Is there any other discussion on the item, or are we, well, okay?
One, one question occurred to me, uh, without going back to look at the written materials, i- if the, uh, if the managers of the production ever decided they wanted to make the plays available for the, for the, uh, for the elementary school or the high school, uh, is there, is there anything in the, in the, the way things are currently structured that would prevent sort of a during-school-hours, daytime, exceptional performance?
No.
Okay, but we're not going to be putting a condition on for limiting for the eight, eight performances, so they would then be free to, to do that.
I think it's just the number of sho, shows, right, that, um...
Yeah.
Yeah, was it, wasn't it eight?
That, that was what the letter brought forward.
Right, it's five full performances and three readers' theaters.
Yeah.
So five productions, but, or eight productions, but five full, full productions that are, that run four consecutive weekends each.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, all right, then I think we'll just, uh, file this and move on to the next item. Thank you, guys, and thanks for the arts in, in Morro Bay. Gives people something to do. Okay, moving on to, to item, uh, B2, and it's case number UPO dash 504, uh, CPO dash 557, 1156 Market Street. Uh, can we have the, the staff report? Thank you, Joan. Uh, excuse me, do we have any, do we, have we had any ex parte communication this item?
No.
Nope, not a new report?
Okay, uh, thank you, Chairman Lur. The next item before you is a, uh, request for conditional use permit and coastal development permit approval for the construction of a single-family residence at 1156 Market Avenue. The applicant is Johnny Biagini, and the architect is, uh, Tom Ray, pardon me, I'm sorry for... From Omni Design Group. The project is located within the R2 duplex residential zoning district, uh, within the planned development overlay zone and in Area G of the beach-street area-specific plan, uh, where the applicant is proposing to construct a 1,302-square-foot single-family residence with a 102-square-foot covered front porch and a 576-square-foot detached This is, uh, the existing site as seen looking towards the east from Market Avenue. Surrounding uses include single-family residential development adjacent to the subject parcel on, um, both sides and the rear, and service commercial uses across Market Avenue to the As noted, the site is located within a planned development overlay zone. This overlay is applied to parcels which, uh, because of location size or public ownership, warrant special review. The overlay is applied to several residential parcels in the southwest area of the city to the west of Main Street. The PD overlay allows for modifications, uh, to certain zoning site development standards where the modification results in a better design or other public benefit. This flexibility could be applied to allow for a reduced front setback for the proposed covered front porch if the Planning Commission finds that this results in a better design. The front setback requirement in the R2 zone is 20 feet. The applicant proposes to locate the covered front porch at a 14-foot setback with the main bulk of the structure to be set back approximately 21 feet from the front property This is the site plan. Um, it shows the adjacent residence to the north has a nine-foot-six-inch front setback, and the adjacent residence to the south has a 12-foot-six-inch front setback. Uh, this proposed reduction in the front yard setback is consistent with Section D, Building Orientation of the Residential Design Guidelines. Um, the reduction in the front setback also allows for more room at the rear of the lot for a potential second dwelling unit to be constructed in the future. Um, as previously stated, the Planning Commission does have the authority to allow for the reduction in the front setback if it allows for better design. Um, and it's also important to note that while the zoning ordinance allows for detached garage buildings to be located up to one foot off the interior and rear property lines, um, the applicant proposes to locate the garage structure at the required five-foot setbacks. Um, not only does this constitute less of an encroachment on the neighboring, uh, properties, but it also allows for easier, um, future development of a potential second dwelling This is the proposed floor plan illustrating the three-bedroom, two-bath residence with front and a small rear porch. The front and rear elevations, um, note the varied gabled roof lines with exposed rafter tails, pronounced front porch and entryway, and the detached garage, uh, as noted at the rear of the, uh, parcel. The north and south side elevations, um, illustrating architectural integrity throughout the design. This photo simulation of the proposed project shows the proposed residence in its neighborhood context illustrating its compatible architectural style and scale and mass with the adjacent residential development. Landscape plan illustrates the applicant's plan to utilize drought, drought-tolerant and native species throughout the site with semi-pervious pavers used for the front walkway and the rear patio areas. It, it is therefore staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the requested conditional use permit and coastal development permit by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 02 dash 18 with, uh, the associated findings and conditions of approval. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have, uh, questions for staff? Okay, Michael?
I guess my, my biggest question is, we had some goals and things we established a, a year or so ago, and, um, one of the things we talked about was not downzoning parcels, so the fact that this is a duplex-zoned area, the staff doesn't feel that this is underbuilding a place where we have potential to add density to the city.
I think the applicants were, were pretty thoughtful in considering potential future development of a second, uh, residential dwelling unit in the, in the rear of the property, which is why they kept the, um, tried to move the, um, front structure a little bit, uh, to the front, leaving some, plenty of space in the back, as well as keeping that detached garage, um, five feet from the property line.
Mm-hmm. But, you know, you're, you're supportive of this being just a single lot, single-family house on a lot.
Yeah, I mean, we, in, in the context that we, we talked about, you know, encouraging folks to have additional units in the areas, mostly that was in the higher density, um, in the areas in the R3 and R4 zones where we had those conversations. A lot of our R2 lots are small. This one actually is a decent size, and you could fit two units on it. Um, they do certainly, you know, the layout and design does, would allow for the construction of another unit, um, that they chose to in the future. Doesn't preclude it, oftentimes that's what you get, you get a, you get a house design that precludes it, we have, we have many examples of those in the, in the R2 zones, so, this one seemed to sort of answer the question both ways, and, um, would allow for them to put a second unit over the garage, or, you know, connecting the, the, the units if they wanted to. There was a few options that would, that could take place there that you could put one on there, so, again, if you approve it, it doesn't preclude that from happening in the future, which is kind of what we were looking at when we, we took a look at it.
Okay, anybody else? So, Joan, at maximum, maximum density, would this be, it's a 6,500-square-foot lot, something like that? What, how many dwelling units could be placed, single-family units?
Minimum lot area per unit for, uh, the R2 is 2,900 square feet, so they could fit two dwelling units.
Two units. Okay. It looks like there's plenty of room left, you know, to do an L-shaped unit with even another garage there, you know, where that garden area is in the future and stuff, so I think, so that was my concern with this, too. Okay. Um, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. Would the applicant like to step forward and speak to this item?
Good evening. I'm Johnny Biagini, the applicant on this particular site, and I thank you for this consideration. Um, I am not a big developer, this is my first toe in the water, and, um, so I'm going kind of slow and, and sure, to be sure, um, that this is something that, um, I can do within my skillset. Um, I am really pleased that, uh, I've come up with a plan with my architect that I think is in keeping with the design of, of Morro Bay and the bungalow. Uh, I think it's a very useful space, uh, in terms of size, and I think it will be very useful to so many people, families, uh, who are looking for housing, uh, in the future, and, um, I'm excited because it's, it's a project that I'm able to fulfill now, um, that was something that, uh, my late husband had wanted to do, uh, many years ago, and, uh, so finally coming to this, to this time that I can do this. In terms of the second unit, yes, I would love to put a second unit, um, but at this time, it's just, uh, not feasible, and, and I want to get something done, uh, while, um, there is such a big need for housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else, would anybody else like to speak to this item? Okay, see, seeing none, I'll, uh, bring it back to the, uh, we'll come forward if you'd like to speak. Come on. Well, she's not here.
Oh, Gary Johnson, I'm a resident of the Morro Bay, and we live right in, in back of it, and I've known the Biaginis for a number of years, and I'm looking forward to the project. We've, we're behind it 100%, and I like your attitude, and it's, uh, you could, it's a one-story, we still have our view, but anyway, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, would anybody else like to speak? Okay, at this point, I'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have any discussion or, uh, questions? Michael?
No, I, I think it's a fine project, I think it meets our design guidelines, I have no trouble with the reduced, uh, setback. I think we should encourage people to reduce the setback when they've got that much right-away capacity to park in the front, and, uh, it's one of the first projects I've seen that actually shows at least the idea of photovoltaics and the rain barrels, and, you know, good, good for that, and I, I think it's a very nice design. I just wish we built dens where we have the capacity to build dens. In the long term, it's to the city's advantage, I think.
In my opinion, this is one of the nicest projects we got here that I've seen. I love the, I love the design, I love the fact that it's just one unit for right now, and, um, I, I, it reminds me of, I, I used to live in, like, Long Beach area by Cherry Park, and there was a lot of these old homes there in, in kind of a bungalow-ish kind of, like, look, and I, I like the porch, I think it's really cool, I, I, I just, um, I, I like the landscaping, um, just really, uh, I just really, really like this project, I, I like these kind of, kind of homes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, um, I had some issue with the legality of the front porch, but, you know, technically, you know, it should be in the, behind the 20-foot setback, except for there's several, there are several conditioning factors that are on this lot. One, we used to do what we call lot averaging, or...
It, it, that, that conflict doesn't apply to the R1 zone.
Yeah.
This one has the PD zone overlay, so it allows you to use it here as well, those other two houses on the other side are further forward on their, on their lots, so it doesn't, it won't stand out.
Yep, and I, and I think that's why it, why it fits, I think this is, and then the other, the other item, too, is that I've always disagreed with the, uh, with the restriction that, that front porches, if they are truly front porches, could not, were not allowed in the setback, you know, and also count as, uh, as, uh, lot coverage. So, you know, as we move forward, this shows, uh, shows one of the examples of why porches are, you know, are a great thing, and they're really helpful for the community, because they give you a connection, they give you that semi, semi-private connection to the street. So you're protected, but you're still semi-protected, and it's, it's, has to do with, uh, also has to do with, uh, you know, defensible space and just making the community feel more, uh, humane or more human-scaled. So, I don't, you know, um, for all those reasons, I, you know, I'll, I'll support this project, I think it's a, I think it's a really good project, I think it's well-done, and I think it allows for future density without, without, with this footprint and to readily put a... and to readily put a second unit there when the, when it's, 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 should go in there, and when they have the ability to do that. So, and once again, I like having the sustainable features pointed out on the, on the plan so that they get included. So, okay. Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to actually second that thought about the porches, because I recall reading, probably now several decades ago, that they had a project in Florida, and the designers, they insisted that the roads would be narrower than otherwise the norm, they would have short picket fences, and they would all have porches to sort of tie the community to the street in that sense of human scale. I think it's very effective here. This is a charming, charming design.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Let me get the resolution.
Thank you.
It's a motion to approve Resolution, Resolution Number PC02-18, and approving the coastal development permit CPO557, and conditional use permit UPO504, to allow the construction of a new single-family resident at 1156 Market Avenue.
I'll second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. See none. Joan, could you call a question?
Sure. Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Barron.
Aye.
Commissioner Engraffia.
Aye.
And Chairman Lure.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Thank you, guys. It's quick and efficient. Okay. We move on to the next item. Item Number B3, Case Number UPO-508. Site location, 3310 Main Street. Do we have a staff report on this? And let me ask, do we have any ex parte communication on this? Nope? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Lure. This final item before you this evening is a conceptual review for two new single-family homes, each with attached accessory dwelling units to be located at the corner of Main Street and Tahiti. The 4,800-square-foot property is comprised of two underlying lots. And because Main Street is a major collector, redevelopment of this property will require frontage improvements along both Main and Tahiti streets, including new curb, gutter, sidewalk with ADA transitions around the driveways, and street trees. The project site is located within the mixed commercial and residential zoning district and in Area A of the North Main Street specific plan. In Areas B, C, and D, an increase in commercial use is encouraged by the plan. However, in Area A, the plan proposes decreasing visitors serving commercial uses and creating development standards that blend businesses into the neighborhood. From Penay Street north to Zanzibar, this is the only property with a commercial use. South, from Penay to Island, there are only a few pockets of commercial use, most notably between Jamaica and Java Streets where the multi-tenant Manfred Square is. This is the existing site as seen from North Main Street. The three options for redevelopment of this property would be mixed-use, solely commercial, or solely residential. The relatively small size of the parcel, 4,800 square feet, affects the viability of redevelopment options, especially when factoring in zoning standards for setbacks and parking. Most of the individual small lots in the MCR R4 SP zone have been developed with single-family homes due to their small size and the demand for housing. This project offers the advantage of four housing units, which is consistent with the housing element policies that encourage maximizing housing opportunities in high-density residential zones, as discussed earlier this evening. At best, a mixed-use project in this location could have no more than two studio or one-bedroom units and a very limited commercial space. A redeveloped commercial use would have to comply with parking space requirements and parking lot screening standards. The existing site plan shows the existing commercial development to be demolished, including the non-conforming pole sign located at the corner. This is the proposed site plan showing Unit 1 to be right along Main Street with a total of 2,436 square feet. That includes a 1,260-square-foot single-family residence with an attached 630-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, and a 546-square-foot garage. The 2,616-square-foot Unit 2 includes a 1,322-square-foot single-family dwelling with an attached 658-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, and a 636-square-foot garage. Concept plans depict modern designs with strong vertical and horizontal lines, varied wall planes, and low-pitched gable and shed roofs. Dark vinyl windows in a variety of sizes are located to maximize views and light and work well with the overall building design. Living spaces arranged on three floors, the two primary units in each building have kitchens on the third floor, which may benefit from an elevator or lift. Construction plans should carefully consider soundproofing between the primary and accessory dwellings in each building. This slide illustrates the proposed project as seen from Main Street and Highway 1 in the elevation drawing of Unit 1 on the right-hand side. The north elevation shown to the left shows Unit 1 as seen from Tahiti Street. This is Unit 1 rear and eastern side elevations. Unit 2 elevations. The front elevation is shown in the image to the left. The western side elevation is in the picture there on the right. Unit 2 rear and side elevations. Also, the proposed colors and materials for the project, as shown up above, include a mix of shingles, wood, and painted horizontal siding and smooth-finished stucco. Plans show composition shingle roofing and open horizontal railings at the decks and entry stairs. A variety of dark vinyl windows would be installed without additional exterior trim. Highway 1, north of Highway 41, is shown as a street providing scenic views in the general plan and the coastal land use plan. A residential project is likely to have less impact on views from Highway 1 than a commercial project, which would presumably include signage and brighter exterior lighting. Insofar as this project would even register with drivers, it would provide an interesting contract, contrast, excuse me, to the prevailing style of surrounding development. The North Main Street specific plan requires an assessment of scenic values and preservation of scenic views, as well as a view analysis from residential neighborhoods to the east. It states, quote, "To the extent practical, significant view opportunities shall be preserved and protected through the use of view corridors and airspace easements," end quote. To the south, views through the cloisters are designated as significant public views. There are no designated areas of visual significance in the immediate vicinity of the project. Views toward the ocean from the neighborhood immediately behind the project site are interrupted by power lines and the highway. Even so, all the island streets naturally provide a view corridor toward the ocean. Concept plans provide a view analysis of the project on Page 5 and Pages 13 through 18 in your, in your plan sets. The North Main specific, North Main Street specific plan states that the maximum height shall be generally two stories above subterranean or semi-subterranean parking if provided, not to exceed 25 feet, except that the Planning Commission may allow up to 30 feet to encourage roofline variations and sloping roof treatments, provided that the additional height is necessary for such roof treatment and that corridors protecting significant views are provided. The plan indicates that long, unvarying rooflines should be avoided, and that where a 30-foot-tall roof height is permitted, generally not more than 1/3 of the overall roof should be that tall. In order to accommodate the proposed two-dwelling designs on three floors, which, with garage, parking, sloped roofs, and private outdoor space, the applicant is requesting approval for a maximum height limit of more than 25 feet, ideally 30. Commissioners should indicate whether they can support an increased maximum height limit. First-floor plans of Unit 1 and 2. Each building has a two-car garage located slightly below existing grade. Garages are setback 20 feet from the property line, and so would allow for parking in the driveway. State law prohibits requiring parking for accessory dwelling units within a quarter-mile of a public transit stop. However, it is noted that a second man door at the southwesterly corner of the garages might enable a more versatile or shared use of the garage space between the, between the two units. Second-floor plans. Unit 1 to the right shows the primary and accessory units sharing the western wall with views toward the ocean. Unit 2 to the left shows the accessory unit along the western elevation and primary unit along the eastern elevation. Third-floor plans for the two primary dwelling units. It's to be noted that a complete future application should include description of all green building measures used in the design, construction, and operation of the project, including water and energy-saving features and the use of sustainable building materials. It is therefore staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission take into consideration the staff report, hear a presentation by the applicant, and provide comments and direction. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have questions for staff? Michael?
Yeah. I guess the main thing I'd want to ask staff is the opinion about what that garage entry level is. That's not really sunken, because it's an entry on grade. So, is that one of the things you're asking for guidance from us on, in terms of opinion?
I think what we're really just looking at is to get the features for the outdoor spaces, the garages, the extra unit, that type of thing. They're requesting the allowance to have the height up to the 30 feet. Is that acceptable? Is something between 25 and 30 acceptable? If it's not, if 25 is it, then that'd be great if you provided that input for them, so they would, so they would know. I mean, you, in this instance, for this project, you see them, you know, adding the density that we were talking about for the last project, right? And, and to make those viable units and to have the decent outdoor spaces and those types of things, they're sort of requesting the additional height to make that happen. So, you also get a nice pitched roofline versus flat. So...
Okay. Richard?
Scott, this is zoned commercial, yeah?
The whole zoning is what?
Okay. So, is it, yeah?
It's mixed commercial residential.
Yeah. Okay. So, if, being that it's zoned mixed commercial residential, the parking requirements of, when it's, for a commercial, the, can you explain the parking requirements of something like, if it was a mixed commercial?
So, if you, if you look at the project that's there now, the commercial building that's there?
Yeah.
I don't know that it even has the parking that it's required to have, let alone adding in residential units above or behind. There's no place to put them behind. You'd have to put them above, and then there wouldn't be parking for them. So, the site's small. And so, when you start talking about mixed use, the concept by itself, without looking at the site, sounds really good. But, when you try to implement it here, you have parking requirements that would be for the commercial piece and for the residential piece. And I don't know that, that this project, as it sits there today, has the requisite parking to deal with the use that's there. I mean, we'd have to do the analysis, but there's not going to be room, there's not going to be space available to add parking for, say, if you put units above it. So, the idea that I'm trying to give you is, this is a mixed-use project with residential above. Probably, it wouldn't work. It would have to be a much smaller commercial footprint to allow a studio or one-bedroom, you know, unit above.
Okay. Joe?
Were this, were this called a duplex rather than a single-family residence and a secondary unit? Would there be any different consequences to that labeling? Or how, it might be something in the way of parking, or use their parking, or anything else?
That's exactly right. Parking would be an issue. With the accessory dwelling unit, state law dictates that we cannot require parking if you're within a quarter-mile or a half a mile of a transit stop. But, with a duplex, you would be required to, to provide the parking.
And what, in what other sense, Mike, this, would this, as currently designed, would this fit the definition of a duplex?
It would not. It would fit, it would fit the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, because the square footage of the, of the second unit is 50 percent or less of the habitable square footage of the first one, and it's under the maximum, which is 1,200 square feet, I believe.
I think so, yeah.
Jesse?
Kind of just, something that was, I was thinking about when I drove by and I was looking at it. And it may be totally infeasible, but a multifamily crossing, you know, the property line as the current situation does, cross the property line, would have the same parking issues as what you're describing with a duplex, right? So, you would have to have X amount of parking spaces per unit, and subterranean probably would be a problem with the soils, I'm imagining.
Well, and it's so small. This lot's tiny. I mean, when you were talking about, when you're talking about multifamily, they're putting a lot, a lot in the package. The way that they were able to do that is because of the change to the accessory dwelling unit law.
Right.
You know, back in January of last year. So, it relieves the need for the parking for it, so you can get that extra unit in there. And it's actually a decent size. What was the size of this? It was six something? Yep. Six something. So, actually a pretty decent-sized accessory dwelling unit.
Right. And I guess my thoughts are, I mean, someone's going to need to park somewhere anyway. I mean, we live in Southern Calif, we live in Central California, someone's gonna, they're gonna have a vehicle. So, I mean, that, that car's gonna have to park somewhere. So, I would encourage maybe, wow. I don't know that I can encourage anything. I'm not in, in favor of, you know, 25 to 30-foot allowance. I would be in favor of...
Well, it's just questions right now.
Okay, sorry.
We'll move on to comments later. Okay. Any more questions? Okay. Do we have plate heights on these, these floors?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I will double-check.
Doesn't, doesn't look like the plans show that, but the architect's in the audience, so I'm sure, I'm sure he has an idea about what it is.
Okay. Then also, what is the reading on the, we're allowing additional five feet for a varied roofline, such as a sloped roof. So, are we allowing it for the roof, or we, would we be allowing it for wall sections also?
Well, it talks about a third of it, you know, you can't have more than a third of the roof being at that, at that level, and so they would have to comply with that. So, so you see the design of it. A portion of it is at that, and I assume that they designed it that way. I don't know what the total number is. I haven't looked at it. It's really, from the concept standpoint, to take that deep of a dive at it, but, but they were aware of the requirements, so I assume that it complies with that.
Well, it looks like we've got, you know, above the 25-foot height, we have wall sections and the roof...
Oh, I see what you're saying. I'm sorry.
You know, and the roof starts above, you know, above that. So, we also have, you know, the ridge lines running, you know, north-south, rather than traditionally, we, we think of, you know, roofline allowances that we give, we, we have the ridge lines running east-west to, to allow for, you know, for view sheds and stuff. Was that part of the consideration on the, in the staff review?
I think it was just that they're, they have, they have a portion of the roof shown at, at the 30-foot level. Depending on how you design those roofs, if you just have them sloping in one direction versus multiple directions, you're gonna have walls that are taller than the 25-foot, just as, as it relates to the design of the roof. So...
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff? At this point, we'll open it up for public comment. And would the applicant like to address this first, if they can get around that cat?
I love that cat. Is this cat always here?
Only on, only on the specials.
This one, or the gray one. There's a gray one that comes to.
Oh, there's a gray one? Oh, yeah. I like it.
Only on conceptual plans.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. My name's Joel Snyder. I'm at Tenover Studio. You know, I think you're seeing here what is probably a unique project to Morro Bay. This is really using the accessory dwelling unit. State ordinance at its best, as you're kind of hearing from staff and you're seeing in the plans, we're using, you know, and I've been designing small, multifamily residential units and large projects and small projects for over 20 years, and this is a good example of just what you need to do to get that done and, and to get the density and to get the two nice housing units in each one of these properties. This is kind of what we need to do and why we're requesting a little bit of extra height. I think the important things to note is that we're not, you know, impacting anyone's view more than a 25-foot building would. The view you're considering is the view you're looking at when you're looking at the building, not the view, not other people's views. You can see that. And I can actually borrow your clicker. You can see that, and I can actually borrow your clicker. We did a height study, you know, we, and we put, I was just gonna point it, I just, you know, we put, we pushed the first floor down as far as we could. With the compound slopes you need to get down, we pushed that building down about 10% is the slope, so that gets us down as far as we can. And then we tried to pick up as little height as possible. We're actually closer to 29 feet, not 30 feet. So, you know, we're still trying to make that consideration with height. And as you can see, as you work up the street, there's buildings of similar height. I don't feel like we're out of scale by any means. You know, I think the important thing to note is what Joe noted is that there's a view corridor down the street, so the neighbors have and will maintain their view, and everyone up the street will maintain that view down that corridor and across to the ocean. And then our job was to, you know, do our best job if in these units provide the best view we could there. You know, the other thing I need to note really is, you know, parking, going back to the site plan, we have eight parking spots for four residences. You know, it's very ample parking. You know, it's more parking than what's there now for the commercial use. So I'd say we're addressing the parking issue as much as we can. I don't think you're gonna add to street parking in any significant way, and that, you know, these front setbacks here allows two cars to be parked in the driveway, two cars to be parked in the garage. So I think, you know, our job again was to consider the people that are gonna live there and consider the neighbors and try to make it as easy on them as possible. We didn't put it in this particular application, but, you know, when Ken Stollmeyer came to us, I mean, I think he had always wanted to do a multifamily project here. The accessory dwelling unit ordinance allows this property to, you know, make sense for the first time. You can only put two dwelling units on this as a multifamily property. It's too small of a property to make a viable commercial space. It's already a commercial space and, like Scott said, underparked. And Ken's having a lot of issues trying to rent that space. It's not really of a viable commercial space anymore. That whole north end of North Main Street, there's, it's on an island. There's no commercial space for five blocks in either direction. So we feel this is a, putting a square peg in a square hole. This project fits this spot. This project fulfills a goal of bringing more housing to this area, whereas the commercial space that's there now, it's hard to, it's hard to rent. It's hard to make it viable. So I think in that way, you know, Ken's excited that that's, this is a benefit to the community. And I guess with that, if there's any questions you have, I'm more than willing to answer.
Okay, we'll listen to other public comment and if we have questions, we'll bring you back up.
Great, thanks.
Okay, do we have anybody else who would wish to speak? Please state your name.
Good evening, guys. Excuse me, I've got, as you can hear, the after effects of the winter flu, so I'm good with it now, but I don't have a very good voice today. But anyway, this was a dream of ours since we bought the building, or bought the business and the building back in 1996. I bought main lighting back at that time to be a family-run business where it was a nice little sleepy community. It actually was a very viable business for me and my wife and my three boys that we raised out of here. And because of that cycle, it finally ended for us because of the different ways that people buy product nowadays. It's very difficult to be in a retail-type business. So we changed our whole format, went to San Luis Obispo, opened up our showroom now, and now all I do is do lighting design for commercial and residential projects. So, you know, I'm very aware of trying to make product or making a product that would be very, what we call gold lead-oriented, that would be least amount of wattage being burned. So I am trying to put this project together based on the fact that I could sell the property. If someone comes back in it, they'd have to do something similar to this to get the return they want to get on it. I could keep the project as a commercial property. I've been through five tenants now, and every one of them's had problems trying to get their businesses opened up there. A commercial building, I sent you guys a letter. I stated that the commercial businesses work better as a whole, you know, five, six, seven, eight businesses being in one area, it works out real nice for you. But when you're by yourself, on an island by yourself, my only savior I had was a sign. And that sign, because I moved out of the business, out of that building, is now not a legal sign. So I have to pull the sign down. Now my tenants want some way to advertise. I can't come up with an answer for them without spending money. Now I'll just get out of that because I don't want to drag it out. My thing is, I like this idea. I went to the architects, I said I want something very airy, I want something small. My brother who owns MindBody Software came to me and said that they got, they're always trying to find applicants to come in their place to find places to rent. They don't want dorms out of San Luis Obispo. They want to see a nice finished product, doesn't have to be big, but a nice, beautiful project that has a view to it, that these millennial sort of clientele that would be looking at things like that would be wanting to see this. And so that's where we went with this whole idea. We found out that we'd lost some variance in distance to Main Street, so that made that first unit, the unit one, very small. And we, I don't know how, you know, how small can you be? You know, for me, all I need is 600 square feet, a bed, a microwave, and a TV set, and I'm happy. Okay, so that was my whole concept of this thing, was as small as beautiful. And I think they did a great job not showing on their shoebox up there, because that's the biggest problem we see with two-story houses on these type of projects, I mean, properties. So that's how the design came about. The problem is they encroached on the height of that one ridge up there at 29, four feet is where it came out. No matter what we tried to do, we couldn't come that distance any different with that. And so that's, we can cut the whole thing off flat, make it look very sterile again, and we can get to 25 if we had to go that direction. But I would hate to see that architectural, well, it's not shown there, but the architectural look of that, that we, I think is a pretty cool look. I mean, I think it's very modern, contemporary, but it's also very beachy, too, with all the different types of materials that they're gonna put on this project. So efficiency, I, again, I'm in the lighting business, I'm an electrical person, I, every appliance, everything lighting-wise is gonna be, you know, zero amount of wattage, zero amount of energy. I'm gonna get, I want that meter to go backwards. You know, I mean, that's my whole goal and stuff like that. And I'm also thinking about the fact that, you know, I have owned another property in town that we live on right now, I'm monitoring dunes, and I could see myself letting someone else take care of that big piece of property and me living in that one bedroom, you know? It's a very livable and I love the unit, so I think that's where I wanted to go with that conversation, so I thank you very much for looking at that thing.
Okay. Would anybody else like, wish to speak?
I know the Stollmeyers quite well, and I want to support them in not making this still a commercial property because I understand what they're saying, and for a long time we know that it's very hard to have a business on North Main Street that's north of San Jacinto if you're not in a group with other businesses. So I support them in changing this over to residential. I don't support the 30-feet limit. There's a house down on Urbabuena and, two houses in fact, on Urbabuena in Maine and Zanzibar in Maine, and they both were allowed at one point to go to 30 feet at three-story. And it's that look of three-story that really kind of ruins the neighborhood, and people that live back behind those two current buildings on Zanzibar and Urbabuena are unforgiving of that, and they always have resented that. And when we've tried to put three stories and 30 feet further down, south of San Jacinto on Maine, we know that that violates the North Main Street plan, and that was not allowed. So I would encourage you not to allow over the 25 feet, even if it means a flat roof. I think that that's okay because that's what fits with the neighborhood. And parking will be an issue because we know tandem is an issue wherever, regardless of where the bus stop is, there will be an impact, and I don't know that you can fix that.
Okay, anybody else like to speak to this item? Okay, I think I'll leave it, leave it open for public comment. I think there's gonna be a couple of questions for the applicant. Joe, do you have any questions for the applicant? Jesse?
I have a question for the designer. Do you perceive there being a problem for a, I don't want to say a, just a stock pickup truck to pull into that garage the way it's subterranean?
No, I mean, it's, it ends up being a pretty gentle slope, just with the, you know, again, you gotta get a compound curve on that thing, so you got a curve at the top, curve at the bottom, you have a very short section of actual slope. It's just the way we design them because you don't want it bottom out, you know, high center as you're coming down the driveway. And then it's a regular garage, you know, it's a regular seven-foot-tall garage door, so I don't see any regular garage door in a regular house. It's, that's how it's designed.
What would you estimate the downslope from the street to the entry to the garage to be?
It's 10% probably from back a sidewalk to front garage door. There's the maximum 10%. 5% total probably is kind of the max you can do. I mean, we could, we've done it before, we've gone steeper. We've gone up, you know, certain jurisdictions allow 20%. I mean, didn't they do that in Pismo? I feel like that's Pismo's.
We had some, we had some areas that were 20%.
Yeah, so you could go down a little steeper and that would push our building down a little bit more.
Your issue there are your vertical curves coming into the driveway and getting into the garage.
Right.
You're making that work, yeah.
Yeah.
20% is pretty steep.
That's the trade-off.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the only question I have, yes.
Okay, Michael, do you have any questions? Richard? Okay, I have a question for you on this, is a couple items. What are the plate heights on each of the floors? Are they from ceiling, floor to ceiling?
Eight, eight, you know, you got eight foot, you know? And so actually, I wanted to clarify, I mean, if we can't, can't really get it to, you know, we can't really get that third floor in 25 feet, our plates above that, and then you gotta get the roof rafters in there, and so we really, you know, put the sloped roof on there so we could bring it up to 30 feet, which is, you know, written in the ordinance. So, you know, we would have to be pushing down further and flattening that roof, and I think we think this, having the sloped roofs and being able to get up to 29 feet's a better solution for the project. And yeah, and if we, if we can't hit the 25 feet, I don't know how, we can't keep that third floor, so we don't have the, we don't have the four units. It's kind of a, it's kind of our lynchpin.
Okay, and then according to the guidelines, according to the requirements, the way I see them, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, we're allowing 30-foot for four sloped roofs. Is there an allowance for wall heights to be within that 25 to 30-foot range, or is that just for the roofs?
If you have a roof that's at 30 feet, you're going to have one or you're gonna have a couple of walls at least that are that, that are going up to that level. You're not gonna have it, have to be sloped off like that if it wasn't.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, unless it's a hip.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's the only way you'd be, I mean, it would only be, that would be the only, that would be the only option you would have there.
So what I'm concerned about is starting, starting the plate height that the lower, you know, on the pitch.
Okay.
Above 25 feet. It seems like we were allowing the 25 to 30 feet to allow for variation in roof geometry and, and, and design, but where we've fallen on wall heights in that 25 to 30-foot range?
I don't think the intent of the policy was that you would have it, the roof sloping off.
Okay.
In all directions. I don't think that was the intent of it. That would be, that would kind of be an odd look for Morro Bay, quite frankly. We don't have a lot of structures that look like that.
Okay. And then also, how do you read, what's your reading on this one-third?
I think it just means you can only have a portion of the structure that's at 30 feet. So we'd have to look at it and see how much they have that's at that 30-foot. Really, it's at that 25-foot plus, right?
Right.
Not the portion that's up to 30, but it's above the 25, I think, is, you can have a third of it. So they would have to do the calculation and show us, did you do that, Joel?
No.
So, yeah, they haven't looked at that yet.
Okay.
So that would be something else they have to consider. That's the limitation.
Okay.
So they have to comply with that.
Yeah, those are, those are my concerns and the questions on that. And then also, as far as photovoltaic production, you've got some east slope, you've got the east sloping roof on the Main Street project, and around here with the morning fog, you get a lot less production from the east slope as you do from the west slope.
Right.
So that may be a consideration in the, in redesigns if you get to that point. So, okay, at this point, I'll bring it back to the planning commission and go for comment on this. Who wants to start? Okay, Michael?
Yeah, first, I'm probably gonna be the biggest defender of going dense like this. I think this is the way we're gonna have to solve the city's problems in the future in terms of growth and not changing the zoning in other parts of town and keeping the perimeters of the city open. And I think the architects have done a really great job. I think the unit designs are really exceptional. The two things that I think are fundamental problems, like Commissioner Lur was starting to talk about, is there are very few places in the code that I'm familiar with that you're gonna get less than an eight-foot ceiling allowed. I mean, even on slopes, you can go below that, but you've gotta go above it for, or past it for the bulk of the space, so. And on a 20-some-foot span, without getting into a lot of internal bearing conditions, you're pretty much gonna have a 10- or 12-foot ceiling to top of floor going on. So you're at 27 feet really with a flat, dead-flat roof, and that's assuming you don't raise the first floor off of the surrounding grade, which I would think would have to be another six to eight inches. So I think what we're fundamentally giving advice on is whether we want to allow 27-foot structures on three floors inside a two-floor zone that potentially had the capacity to go up to 30. In this particular design, I may, again, be the minority in the room. I think once you have this many decks and setbacks with decks on them, I don't think the top especially is benefited by the pitch. I actually think it actually looks better with a flat roof on it. And that's my tendency in general. I think it's really hard for me to talk to the potential neighbors who would be involved in this in a more formal proceeding. I generally tell people when we've been contacted about projects where views are impacted and things like that, I tend to say, well, if they're within the envelope, you should have anticipated that. You know, so I want to tell the, be able to tell the people behind here, they're within the envelope. You should have been able to anticipate that. But when we break that envelope, I think that's a, that's a really big, serious thing. So the only way I can imagine myself kind of coming to terms with this is if we wanted to set up some kind of 25-foot at the building perimeter and then say, as you move back, there's a, there's a point up there at 30 feet we might be able to consider, but you have to start at 25. If I push the facade back, I've gained the capacity to go higher. You know, if I, if I hip the roofs and move that point in, you know, and start out at a seven-foot point but then slope up higher, maybe I can do that. And coming from a place in the east where eccentricity is in units with great lighting and especially views like this are not a bad thing to think about, I think I could think about that different kind of envelope conditions like that. But I'm, if someone goes behind here and then wants to do this as well, I'm just concerned about the impact that the unfortunate, can you go back to the drawing that has the streetscape of all the heights? I think that's the one that's really, that's, yeah, those are really tough because I see those two-story units that are farther uphill and, you know, were higher than they're allowed to build on some of those sites. And so I'm very torn on, on whether or not just the slice in our special zone along Main Street should be allowed to do that, or if this starts to set a precedent, and maybe this is a question for staff I hadn't thought before, does this set a precedent then for the residential zone behind it that they have? then for the residential zone behind it that they have license to do this as well, even though that's a different zone?
Different zone with different policies, I mean, we're going to, we're going to have that conversation at the next planning commission meeting. Um, but, um, yeah, I mean, that, that doesn't set a precedent because they're in a different zone.
And, and you know, I, I think the, the kind of, the kind of technical thing, okay, can you lower that first floor artificially down a foot and a half or something like that to get to the 20? I know those things are out there, but those aren't great units, especially when you're right next to a busy streetscape. And it may even be possible here, but there's other parts of Main Street that I know because of the surface water conditions, we'd really be causing a real problem. You know, we've got some of the sites farther down that neighbors were complaining about flooding when people adjacent were, were building things a few years ago. So I'm, I'm very torn, I want to, I want to congratulate the architect for a great job on the architecture, and I'm totally behind as, as Ms. Winholz was, the idea of converting this particular site into residential. I think this is a real tough site to, to do commercial on. And I'm, I'm in favor of, of the density, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm very torn about breaking that compact about the, uh, the third floor if it involves this kind of height change.
Joe?
Well, I too was very interested in hearing what my fellow commissioners have to say about this project, because this is, in no event is this going to be an easy decision. I also think that I, I have no problem with respect to the current commercial zoning, changing that, because it seems like that ship has already sailed, it's at the far end of Moro Bay, and, and I understand the difficulty of turning that into some sort of viable, viable commercial zoning area or keeping it that. So I'm fine with, um, changing it to residential, but that comes to the more difficult question. And, you know, we're sort of, we're on this, this, the horns of this dilemma, we're on the, as Commissioner Luca says, you know, we'd, we'd surely like to maintain that 25-foot height limit. On the other hand, we frequently recognize the need for affordable housing and the way that a secondary unit can help solve that problem. So we've got these two desirable goals, and they seem to be battling each other. I do recall, we've had some discussions here over the months and years about secondary units, uh, simply not being all that suitable in certain parts of the city. At times, we've talked about, in fact, lots that are just too small. And I, I sort of see that that's happening here, um, that we're trying to, to do something that we all think in the abstract is a worthwhile goal, but we may not be able to do it, because we're being essentially asked to sacrifice that, that height limitation. And as, and as much as I appreciate the design of this modern architecture, you know, it does accentuate certain things like the, uh, the garage, the appearance of the garages on the, on the, on the front of the, of the buildings. It makes a flat or a sloped flat roof essential as opposed to, you know, more traditional gabled looks. So I'm, I'm, I'm wondering about that. And I, I, you know, I, I simply don't know. I, I do think we have a, you know, compact with the people of Moro Bay to maintain that 25-foot limitation, unless there are some very good reasons not to. And, and it goes beyond simply looking at the three-story structure from the passing highways, it also concerns the neighbors further up the hill and, you know, having to explain to them how it is that this particular structure in front of them is being allowed to go a little bit higher than, um, was commonly acknowledged. It, it may be that we simply can't do it here. I, for, for, for a while, I was thinking, well, perhaps the problem is that we're simply building too large of a primary house, and perhaps if that were smaller, it could accommodate the second unit. But I'll defer to people who've got more expertise in architectural design. I don't even know if that's a possibility, I see it's, you know, it's, it's not by any standard, it's a large house, and I can appreciate their efforts to accomplish this, but it's just very difficult within the envelope that I see there. Um, let's see if I've forgotten anything else. Yeah, that's about it. Oh, um, oh, there is one other thing, uh, with respect to this exception to allow a 30-foot extension, extension to 30 feet. I certainly wasn't there when that exception was, was instituted, but I, I can imagine that the intent of that was to allow, um, you know, a more elaborate kind of roof structure. Probably they didn't intend that that would, even though this roof structure was sloped, that probably wasn't the intent of the exception. It was probably something to get away from a roof design that is essentially flat. So while you may argue literally that the exception is available in this situation, I doubt if that was really the intent when they incorporated that exception.
Okay, Jesse?
Um, I think Michael and Joe brought some, um, good points up. I have a couple of concerns, um, with the height, for sure. I would, uh, I, I just don't understand, I guess, how, why the garages have to be so big. First off, the second thing I wanted to bring up as the designer was talking about having eight parking spaces, so two in the garage and two tandem behind, um, in the driveway, I assume, and, and it seems to me that maybe an alternative solution that's, you know, amenable to everybody would be possibly, um, you know, dropping the structure and abandoning the garages. I don't know if that's a possibility with staff, um, so, I mean, I was just kind of spitballing, trying to, um, anyway, that's, I wouldn't be in favor, for sure, of, uh, allowing that height increase. Almost, I don't want to say in every event, but I mean, I would, I would be very reluctant to want to approve a, um, a variance to the height, so.
Richard?
I, I, um, not taking such a cavalier attitude towards the commercial part. I, I think that as a city, we need to be very conscientious that, like having an, like, what I envision, and I'm not saying here, okay, but like an industrial park, a commercial industrial park, not just retail, but having where, um, I might get off on a tangent here a little bit, but you know, having a, having, having an area, maybe like the Tri-W side or something, you know, that, that, we have commercial industrial where we can have like manu, or maybe small manufacturing, something that will bring in jobs here to this thing, more than just retail. Now, going back to this project, I do see, I, I do see that it is unisolated, it is isolated, and it, and it does have that, um, issue. But I think that if we just start switching over to, to just residential, and granted, we have housing issues and stuff like that, but we, we, we need to be thinking how we're going to balance that out as we lose these, where can we, where can we mitigate some of this? And it's not necessarily the applicants' problem, but I think that it should be ours.
Fair point, and I'll, I'll bring this up, um, just because of the nature of the item that we're reviewing, is as we go through the general plan update process, some of you may recall that we, we place an emphasis on providing commercial spaces on the areas south of there, right, along there, and so we're going to have policies in the general plan and LCP that encourage those areas to be, have at least, either be mixed use, but at least have a commercial component, um, in those areas. This area down here wasn't going to have that same emphasis, just because this is an island, this is an exa, I mean, it's kind of there by itself, and, and Mr. Stolmar, obviously, he's had issues, you know, keeping tenants in there, and, um, and it's probably because, like, as he said, it's probably for the exact reason that he stated, that it's there by itself, it, there's not a lot of reasons to go there unless you're going just to whatever's there, and so you need something that's a pretty good draw if you're going to get a lot of business or a known quantity or something like that, somebody trying to do a startup business and they're going to have a tough time.
Yeah, yeah, and, and recognizing that, I'll, um, I have to say my piece on that. Okay, now, now, as far as the, um, the, the project goes, I, I'm not seeing the justification for the 30, okay? I just, I just, you know, even though we can in that zone and, and think, but I, I think that when you, when, when I look at it like from neighborhood compatibility, okay, that's just like, look at it from those eyes, uh, I think that we should try to maintain and, and, especially on the front side there, right, right on Main Street, you know, and, and, uh, you know, it's like we've got everybody behind, behind us there, so. That, that's just my, my gut feel right now, but I want to hear more dialogue.
Okay, I guess it's my turn on this. I've always been an opponent of converting commercial to residential, basically because of, um, we have so, so few frontage street, Highway One, exposed businesses. But in this case, you know, there's been the policy that, that has let previous development pretty much overtake that area as in residential. So I don't think we, you know, it is an island street, but I don't think we can leave this moment, this project out on the island and force them to stay commercial, because I don't think it's viable. You know, we, I have a commercial spot that we deal with, you know, retail exposure, and you have to have that traffic, and the traffic isn't there, you know? So the only other thing is if this was some, the ability to have something that would service those, the local residents that could keep it viable, but once again, we don't have the density there to do that either. So, so I, you know, I, I would let this go residential, I don't see a problem with that in this instance, but I would really hold a line anything further south, you know, on any of those further parcels where there's more commercial clustered. And I think we need to, to clearly state that in, when we do our districts in the, in the update, that, that we expect mixed-use, commercial on surface street facing Main Street, you know? Okay, as far as, as far as the general design of the project and as far as the general layout, I clearly see, you know, the, uh, the accessory dwelling unit, the ADU, this project wouldn't be possible without the, the last state law that was incorporated. And, um, and it firmly uses that and fairly uses that and creates a higher density because of that, and that's exactly what that law was supposed to do. It was supposed to give small, affordable units by design, which, which this project does, and by having the less than 50%, you know, you have a fairly, you know, actually, you know, I have to commend the designer and the, the architect that this was done, you know, competently and fairly, and it looks, and was done well to fit into the guidelines and fit into the rules. The one issue I have is on the height, and that's where you get hung up. It's almost impossible to get this on there with a 25-foot height limitation, and so we're, we're, we're kind of trying to shoehorn it in on, with the public benefit as having affordable units by design as the public benefit, to allow the 30-foot height limitation, or to exceed the 25-foot height limitation. Now, I would have no problem with this project if the sidewall plate lines were at 25-feet height and the roof structure was in that zone between 25 and 30. All you, your gable end walls, your rake walls, you know, I don't, I don't think that's a question, those can be in the 30, the 25 to 30-foot zone, but I just, I would have to have some major convincing that there would be other public benefits to allow those long sidewall, sidewalls at the plate line, at the property lines to be above 25 feet. So that's just my reasoning on that. And I would like to see it, I would like somebody to give me some good benefits that the community would, would profit from to allow this project to go forward. To look in comparison on this, there's four or five projects down on, I think it's Birch Street, uh, down closer to San, San Joaquin, where they were allowed to have the 30-foot height limitation, and they were not, they were nowhere near as well-executed as these designs, but they stick out like a sore thumb in the, in the surrounding 25-foot light, height limitation. So, so I'm kind of on the, I'm on the fence with the, with the excess height. If, if the plate lines could be brought in at 25 feet, then I, then I could be convinced that the, that the roof lines, then the roof, roof structure could be above in that 25 to 30-foot zone, so.
Plate, plate heights at the exterior walls adjacent to the setbacks?
At the setbacks, yeah.
Okay.
At the side, side yard setbacks. So, because that's kind of the starting point of the roof, is the way I view it. Okay, so as far as the issues I see, we've got commercial to residential, we've got the 25-foot height to the 30-foot height. We haven't talked about the orientation of the ridges, you know? In all of our, like, our waterfront master plan, you know, and the bluff top, when we're talking about roof planes exceeding, roof lines exceeding the height limitations, we're always giving the credit if the roof, if the ridge lines run east to west instead of north to south, because that allows further view areas, view shed behind. I don't see how they could do that on this project, but I think we need to bring that up for discussion. Sustainable features, and then also, we also allow in other cases that we allow, uh, excess roof height if we have over four-and-12 roof pitches, you know? So these are two-and-12, are we allowing, you know, is that a factor in this, this case? So those are the questions I would like to, to have this discussion on at this point, I think those are the salient points. So how do we feel about commercial to residential conversion? It sounded like we had like four to one.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it on this, this particular one.
And the staff report does specifically say this portion of Main Street, it would not necessarily support it if it was in another location.
Right, okay, I see a nod.
Correct, I thought, I was waiting for Joan to answer, I thought she was going to talk.
No, we were both silently nodding.
Okay, for the record, um, okay, then the other, the other question is 25 or 30-foot height limitation. You know, where, where do we sit on that? I think that's the thorniest issue.
The, the other thing I was going to... The, the other thing I was going to throw in there, and I know this is going to say, say something that you're not happy with generally, but you know, when, when the thing, when the ordinance talks about going that high, it, it talks as if, if there's a discernible, judgmentable design that we can say it's worthy to do that. And, and I think in, in addition to your comment, I, I kind of agree about the perimeter, uh, to a point. But I, but I think the, the dominant point that that makes is they don't want the entire building that large, that high. So by default, this is the part Jerry's not, it's, it's kind of like if you go to a third floor, there's kind of an FAR anticipation that that upper floor is not going to fill out the buildable footprint. You know, the buildable footprint, if I'm getting this right, is, is roughly 22, what looks like it's larger on the other one. But it, it looks like it's something like 25 by 40, roughly 1,000 square feet. My, my very rough calculations with my, my bad watering eye and my end of my cold and not having dinner tonight tells me that we're at about 75% coverage on the top floor. And, and so I would say is another way to look at it is if we choose to look at the third floor, which doesn't seem to be discussed in, in the, in the, in the code right now. If we go to a third floor, would we be comfortable with saying in a situation like this, there's a maximum coverage we would want to see? So that we're not saying you can go up to 30. We're not saying that you can't go above 25 if we see there's value in a three-story solution. But we do see a maximum third floor that can impact the city. I mean, one, one thing about this that I do think is part of the ingenious part of the design is, is while the ridge, and again, I, I'm not an advocate of the slope on this one, but the way the, the massing is done, the face on Tahiti never gets very wide. And so you get these kind of canyons of light coming down, which you, I would never say that. Those terms don't show up here too much, you know, because we don't, we end up usually, usually it's building out the footprint. If you look at the other facades on Tahiti that they've shown there, several of those facades on the second floor fill out the entire footprint. So they've actually been, they've actually restrained themselves from filling out the footprint on every floor. And at the third floor, it's, it's, like I say, very roughly about 75%. So, so is another way to look at this is, and, and it's not codified. This is where it is project by project or could be into the code that if we have this strip, that we see these lots are of certain size and we see the creativity that the designers can bring into handling that with the massing. Could, could we, could we violate that if we had a floor restriction on that third level to a certain point? And that's where I would say, can you take a few feet here and there? I don't know. These are, these are very nice units. I don't know that I'd want to say, oh, that, take 20% out of that unit. I don't think so. I could take a couple feet out of here or there. You know, I could say, I don't, I don't know if the bathroom in the unit facing the ocean is worth having that square versus a five by eight. Can I pull a foot off the, I mean, you can play those games, but I'm, I'm just wondering, is there another concept there? You know, if one is take the envelope at 25 feet and then your slopes dictate the 30-foot and can you move the walls in to get to the higher point? I think that's one strategy. And I think that's within, that's within the, the, the way it's written, I think. I think what, what Jerry was proposing and what I kind of alluded to is if that perimeter has that plate height, you can go three floors inside. You just can't, you have to somehow work it in. You're massaging your perimeter. And then the other way I would think is, is there a cap on how much that third floor could be, that you can arrange the massing in all sorts of creative ways to give light to one side, the other common space and something like that. That's just another concept.
Okay. Hold on a second. Let us, okay, Richard?
Yeah. Um, I, listening to what you're, what you're saying are, to be clear, are you maybe saying that instead of tripping out or instead of, instead of thinking so much on the height part, uh, going with a, I know this is a bad word, but floor area ratio on the upper floor and that kind of dictates how, how we, um, view the whole project? Is that kind of?
I'm just basically saying that the city founding fathers, mothers, whoever put this document together, said there was a discernible zone in there for judgment. And we've, we've heard testimony that we don't think that judgment's been used wisely to date. Okay. And I'm not necessarily sure without looking at those projects that were referenced more carefully. I don't, they don't register off the top of my head. But I would say since there's a sense of judgment in there, what's it judgment about? And it's, it's either the massing or that restricted upper level not impacting as much. They, the house, the, the drawings, when you look at the massing, they've beautifully pulled back the corners. I mean, you're not going to see too many people. They're going to pull back eight or nine feet. And, and the second unit that's into Tahiti, they've reduced the front of that building to, you know, the width of the stairwell. That's unbelievable. The amount of light that's going to come into Tahiti there is, is definitely different than we're seeing in a lot of the, the spec things that get built around town. So that's why I think that the architects have done a great job here. I don't want to throw the proverbial baby out with the bathwater here. I just want to try to understand, do we have another way to look at this thing for this particular one that establishes some kind of precedent down the line that if we're going to rewrite code for this part of town, would we want to consider that? And that's where I want the, the, you know, the discussion here about because, yeah, I know we haven't, we've talked about there's parts of town FAR would be not the right way, thing to do. But is this one where if we're going to touch this third floor rail, is that a way to do it, given that we've said there's a zone in there that we're willing to allow to build in?
Okay. Um, since I've been referenced a couple, a couple times. Just one, one second here. Um, okay. Where, where I have problems with the restriction on, bring up the floor area ratio, is you're taking away what was giving and was codified when people bought the lots with that expectation. Having a, you know, using that to, to stair step or to wedding cake to give additional density, I think is of value. And I think that's where it comes into, especially in the higher densities and the multifamily use and even into this project, where, where allowing that extra height to get that third floor with a setback from the, from the setback lines, I think is of value because you're, it's a trade-off. You're not just taking something away. So I see that, that's where, you know, I will agree with you, especially on this project. I think, I think they did a great job with the, the facade on the Tahiti side of in plan stepping back that, that third floor. So with that, let's have the, we'll open a public comment and have the, the applicant come forward.
Thanks. I just kind of wanted to maybe lend a hand to the discussion because I think it's a valid one. Um, you know, we work in a lot of jurisdictions. A lot of jurisdictions sort of bark up the tree that you're barking up. You get up to the third floor and you have a different floor area ratio allowed for that floor. And, you know, prerequisite that that step back a certain amount of feet or at a certain angle up from the street. And so, you know, that's starting the ball rolling into setting a standard for future projects. Um, you know, another thing that we see, especially as it comes to accessory dwelling units, and this is totally not my world, and I don't know how, you know, legal this is, but, you know, if you're looking for affordable by design, you could say if you're providing units under 1,000 square feet, you're allowed to move up into that 30-foot range. You know, there's a, a few things you could probably set into place that, that justify the means. Um, and I think we'd be willing to do those things and we would probably in this project check all those points, you know, our point, we do have small units. They're not really over 1,000 feet, you know, we provide all the parking. We feel like we're, we've done our, worked our hardest and done our best to sort of meet, you know, sort of a unwritten code of conduct with the neighbors by providing ample parking and stepping the building back and moving it back off the street. And, you know, if you're able to sort of set those as standards and move towards that, I think that's, you know, something that valuable feedback that we would like and we feel like we could work to. I do have one concern though, about if you're setting the plate height at 25 feet and you're going to work up. I, I think that, you know, we presented a project to you here at a conceptual review for the hotel on the south end of North Main Street, and we used this exact same roof height exception. And you guys applauded it because I feel like we used it appropriately. Um, and it didn't come up as an issue going above the 25 feet to the 30 feet. I feel like we're implementing that same exact, like in fact, these buildings are very similar in style. You know, we took that conversation, listened to what you guys said and applied that here. And I think we're really doing the same thing. I think we're meeting that intent. And, and the intent is to incentivize, you know, varied roof heights. So if you set that plate back down at 25 feet, you're now going to incentivize hip roofs. And every roof in that neighborhood will be a hip roof because that hip roof will be the only way you can get over 30 feet. So I think the way that the code is written, and it's not a unique code to Morro Bay by any means. That code, I mean, I worked for years in Seattle, same thing. You want to go over 25 feet, you got to pitch the roof. They don't tell you what pitch, what style of roof, how high the roof goes. But what it did is it created a varied street scene and it kept from people capping and just going a flat wall all the way down the street. Um, and so I, I just want to caution you there that I feel like you would hem people into one roof type. And, and if that's what you want, that, that's a good way to get there. If it's not what you want, I, I would just be careful with it. But anyway.
Let me ask you a question on these. On those sidewall plate heights, where, where are they now? And where do you, how, how low do you think you could go even if you do a 7.6 plate height on that, that third floor and then take you, take your pitch from there?
I mean, we would, what was it?
Okay. That, that is, yeah, that is code. You, you're allowed in living area to go 7.6 over X amount away from the wall and stuff. So.
So I guess we could start at seven foot and pitch up, which make those spaces fine.
Or 7.6 and pitch up.
7.6 and pitch it up. But I think it's, this is more of an issue of defining what, right, we can do. But I mean, we, it's close. You know, the other thing is, and you guys mentioned it, the issue of going down more, you know, we're kind of holding at our maximum. If you can go down more, we can get a little lower. Um, but, you know, we're really just, we're boxed right in there, you know.
I think the difference between the two projects too, that we're seeing was that was a pure commercial project and it was in the commercial district. This, we're changing, you're changing the tone of this project to a residential project. So you're, 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 you're going to the neighborhood as far as trying to be consistent with the neighborhood instead of being a commercial project. So, you know, there, there, I know you, that's your justification on this, but I don't think it rings true on that. That's just my logic on that. So that's just personal logic on those two projects. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Again, I'd like to reference the, the mention of the hotel. As, as I, as I recall, in addition to it being a commercial, a large commercial project, I, I don't recall that the roof line, all of the roof line exceeded the 25-foot level. I thought there was only a portion of that roof line. But I, and I don't mean to prove over a small point. I just think that we have, anytime the notion of precedent is, is, is mentioned, I get, you know, very interested in, in what is precedent and what isn't.
Does anybody else have a question for the, for the designer or applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll close public comment, bring it back. So where do you want to go with this, Scott?
Well, I was taking a look at the policy language and it, and it's not as specific as maybe it was being applied to go to the 30 feet. It says, hey, it should be 25 feet. Uh, but then it says, except the planning commission may allow something up to 30 to encourage roof line variation. It's not as specific as we were maybe talking about it. You know, it says, hey, you can get taller if that helps out the look of the project. It does some other things, avoids, like one of the other things, it says, hey, we're discouraging flat roofs. So it wants, the policy wants pitched roofs. And so that's why it does that. It doesn't, it's not a whole lot more specific than that, although it gives you limitations also related to how those portions of the roof can be configured on the lot. It limits, there's limitations to, to how they can apply that. It says buildings running on Main Street, not more than one-third of the west elevation of the building roof line. And if different, not more than one-third of the elevation of the longest building roof line shall exceed 25 feet in height. The standard is intended as a guideline, not a strict requirement. The planning commission may vary from the guideline as deemed necessary and useful to meet the intent of the section, which is again, to provide varying roof forms. The intent is the varying roof forms. It gives you a little bit of a wiggle room to get a little bit taller so you can do that. That probably was in deference to Commissioner Graffia, um, put in place envisioning mixed use projects or entirely commercial projects to get taller, right? Because if you're going to have a commercial storefront, you know, Class A retail's got 16-foot plate, you know? And so by that nature, it's going to be really tough. You have a two-story building to fit it into 25 feet and have a flat roof. Um, but that's not the way this area in, in town has been developed and it is residential. All I'm saying is it, the policy wasn't as, as strict as maybe we were talking about it. It really was more along the lines of, hey, give us varied roof lines and you can have some flexibility to do, to do that. Meaning the planning commission has a discretion to make that decision whether it's worthwhile or not, I guess.
It does specifically say two stories though, right?
It's, it speaks in general to that, yes. It, it says the maximum height shall be generally two stories above subterranean or semi-subterranean parking provided, and then not exceed 25 feet. And then it goes, except the planning commission has the authority to deviate from that. It's really, I guess, it seems like the policy in general is just meant to, hey, we'd like to have better projects. And so things that are more architecturally pleasing and, and here's your discretion. It's a commercial strip that's along Highway One, having a little bit of height there in addition to the residential, it's probably okay. It's at the bottom. I think it's, I think it's bottom of the slope really as you come to Main Street, right? And I think it's paying attention to those things. Whether you're comfortable with it or not is another story, but I, sort of when I was reading through it, it's not a hard and fast rule in here. It sort of provides you a lot of flexibility to deal with the situations you have.
Okay. Joe?
You know, sometimes it's easier to resolve these questions if you can imagine having to explain your decision after the fact. And I can imagine being confronted by a group of Morro Bay residents, some who live behind the proposed structure and others who make a point of observing what's changing in the city, asking why that structure as currently designed should be 30 feet. And my response would be after the fact is we wanted a secondary unit and we wanted that more attractive roof design. Now, that's not a conversation I would like to have.
Okay. Jesse?
That's a very good point. Um, I'm a, well, so I was a little direct when I spoke about I wouldn't be in favor of, of any variation, any variance in the height. I, I think what I want to say is I would really encourage the designers to look for compromises. I mean, I'm not at a 25, 6 or 27 feet. I mean, that's, that's a lot better than 30. Look for, look for inches where inches exist. Um, I would say it's kind of difficult to determine how we're measuring this 25 feet. If it's average natural grade, that's not given.
It is.
Is it average natural grade?
That's how we measure it.
Right. But it's, it looks like the street slopes. So average natural grade for both Unit Two and Unit One would be different, but it's given as a dotted line that's consistent. I, I would encourage us to try to look at, you know, a more steep driveway to get, you know, to pick up a foot if we can. Um, three stories really doesn't, really doesn't conform to that neighborhood. So if we're going to do a three-story there, we really need to make every effort to get as close to the rulebook as we can. to get as close to the rulebook as we can.
Yeah, to me, the three stories is the real thing. I don't think it does us any favors to encourage people to do three floors and then tell them that they have to have, you know, ceilings that compromise the value of the unit. And I don't like the idea of building in technical issues that the code's gone to years of prescription to try to avoid. So I don't want to monkey around with a couple feet here and there. I want the thing to be, do we want three, are we saying we want three floors or not? Because if we don't want three floors, we should say that. Because these other things are all, to me, just little tweaks. I mean, I think if we wanted to say when we're introducing secondary units, we will be more favorable toward broad interpretations of those things, I think, and including three floors, I think that's a statement. I don't want to have to ask somebody to sink the building. That's the one that scares me the most. I don't want to have to ask people to, and I don't want Commissioner Graffia's discussion to say, well, we just thought that 80% upper floor was fine, and it ends up seeming too big. You know, I just don't know where that sweet spot is. I think they're very close to it. You know, I was willing to come here before all of our discussions and say, if it's a flat roof, I'm okay with it. I don't want, I don't like the pitch personally. I think it looks odd, given the rest of the building. And I'm not afraid of flat roofs when you've got multiple roofscapes like they've proposed here. What looks bad is when you do a 25-by-100-foot building with a flat roof. That's what looks bad. Not when you have this many modifications to the facade and the perception of the way the massing of the building that's further enhanced by the material articulation.
But Michael, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the allowance of the 30-foot, to the 30-foot is for varied roof line, roof planes. So it is an allowance to get maximum density. It is a density allowance, which would be what I would favor to begin with. It's allow, it's an allowance to 30 feet for roof variation and roof, you know, to vary the roof planes. Is the way I understand it.
I just go back to the way, the way the thing is technically written. And I'd say these are great discussions to have if we want to open up the technical writing in the next version of the way we see this strip going through North Main.
You get to have this exact, well, mostly this exact conversation at the next meeting, so.
Yeah, so I would say, conceptually, can they wait? Just a little bit. But, you know, that's because I have that trouble, like Commissioner Graffia's saying. What's, where is the rationale? I like the building, but I just don't know if I can support it based on that text.
Okay, Richard?
Michael, I think you hit the nail on the head is that, do we want the three, for the three-story thing? That's the question. And getting some quantification or some parameters in that to help us with that. I also, visualizing with the flat roof and having that different, the different heights, that kind of breaks it up. But I think that Michael's comment is spot on.
Okay, my, you know, I go back to my comment where, you know, the allowance was for varying roof pitches and planes. And if they can bring this project in with a 25-foot plate height and everything above 25 foot is roof line, I would be fine with it. I like, you know, quite frankly, I really like the way, what you did with the project. I like the increased density, I think it fits there. And especially the stepping back, pulling the corners back in plan, I think minimizes that front facade on Tahiti Street, which is where it's, would be incredibly overpowering if it was just a blank, you know, straight up and down. But they, I think they handled that well. And if on those side, the side lots setbacks, if, you know, at the setback, if they could keep the plate line at 25 feet, and then I think that fits into the codification of the rules that we have to deal with. It's not what we would like to see, but it's the rules we have to work with. And I think that's what we need to deal with. So, again, I'd like to open it up to the applicant for a quick comment or a question. Come forward. This is a discussion we're having here. We don't normally do this on.
I understand, I appreciate that very much.
On projects.
Can you pull up number, page five on that? It becomes the, yeah. Because what I was trying to point out, and when I put this project together to introduce to, to have the architects draw for me, I wanted something that had a lot of different feelings to it. And so if you think about Tahiti Street and Main Street, at that point, where the north end of Main Street, everything from Tahiti all the way back to downtown is pretty much level all the way down. We're 49 feet, 49 feet above sea level. It doesn't change that much all the way down there. But when you go past us and get up to what Betty Winholz was saying, is that we get that level to Yoruba Buena and Zanzibar, that we start going up real fast. And so that 30-foot building she's got, she's talking about is already 10-foot in the air above probably the grade level at Main Street. If you look at my level here, everything we see on it is very, to the eye. You couldn't, I don't think you could define 30 feet. Especially from behind the building going up the side, behind Tahiti, it's all uphill. And Main Street goes all uphill. So everybody behind us, if you go to number 17, which is the page that shows the view from the balcony, maybe, I know. You know. Yeah, it's not on this, I'm just saying, okay. On your page 17, it shows from a balcony of five, of a house, five houses up from us, and it takes nothing away from their view to the ocean as far as that extra five feet that, or four and a half feet that we're asking about. So that's all I wanted to put on that thing. I, you know, it's like looking at a ballpoint pen at one point or looking at a 2x4 up there. I mean, you know, what does 30 feet mean? You know, we've got very little ridge line going across that 30-foot and people that's interfering with.
I had some specific questions about what you're discussing. This is probably the best one to show. This is our setback line on North Main.
Right.
But this, and this is just an example, this is setback, say, five feet. You're saying if we hit our plate height at setback, I guess what I'm asking, if we hit our plate height at setback, could a roof like this start higher because it's back off the setback?
Yes, I would say yes.
Okay. And so, okay, so for example, we could have a higher roof.
Yes.
If this was setback, we could have a higher roof. So we imagine the, we imagine that 25-foot at the setback line and work our way up.
Right, right, with a, you know, if anything allowed in like a 4 and 12 or, you know, 6 and 12, you know.
And then the maximum goes to 30, I guess, per the one.
To 30, right.
Okay, thanks.
So, okay, close it, bring it back. Do we need to codify anything?
I mean, that's pretty good, do you do much else? I would also note that we did notice the project, just so neighbors would know what's going on. We only had one person that came in and looked at the plans. And I guess they didn't show up, they didn't seem to cause any concerns when they looked at them either. So we did do that also. We like to do that on a concept review, just so the neighborhood knows what's going on. So we're not surprising people, especially when they hear that you were having a long, protracted conversation about something like that.
So do you feel like you've got enough?
I think this, this function, just like it's supposed to, concept review, we got a lot of input from the commission. I appreciate the conversation. A lot of input went to the applicant, so, I mean, I think that's good. They can make, they need to go make some decisions now, what they want to do.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you for, you know, thank you for going through this conceptual process because I think it saves you a lot of time and effort, you know, to bring things. Go, open it up, you know, let's, because this is a conversation we're having.
Our job is to come back to you again with something you like. So I guess I'm asking you all, are you kind of all feeling that same 25 feet? I know there's no decision made here technically, but I do want to come back with something that you'll approve.
Well, let me bring it, let me just poll the commission.
I would say that in the next go-round of the design, I would have to be able to say that this design is sufficiently impressive to merit that exception.
Fair enough.
Designed to give us a better-looking roof, and I'd have to say, is that roof line better-looking as a result of the extra five feet? I don't really know what that means.
I understand, right.
There's been a lot of good discussion. I don't know that I can add anything at this point, other than I just want to make sure we're thinking about everybody.
Fair enough. Michael?
I think the 25-foot perimeter is an easy defense, especially if you can, you know, continue this kind of exploration of the massing of the project. And it's very easy for us to point out the positive things about this when we see so many projects come forward that add density. This is really one that's adding a lot of density, and it's actually doing it in a really good way. So this is one to show people, I think. So I think it's, I have no trouble with the 25-foot thing at all. I do think, and down the line, though, this is a good discussion to have about, is this a zone to look at a different kind of solution?
I agree. Richard?
I'm also, I agree. I agree with my commissioners who articulate it much better than I can.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, great. Thank you for contributing, bringing this forward. Okay, let's see, where are we? Okay, one thing I'd like to say is that I think this discussion is really healthy, and I really, you know, want to thank you, Scott, for setting up this process because I think they get into it without a lot of the engineering detail and expenses and gives everybody an input to help shape the projects before it costs too much.
I found it to be almost invaluable for the, I mean, I've been doing this for, this process for the last, I don't know, 15 years about, so, yeah.
I think it's a good addition to our, to our process. Okay, at this point, we've got new business, there's none. Unfinished business, there's none.
Scott was going to ask us about, was that your report? About our planning commission?
I'll ask you when we get to that item. I think you guys have one before it, though, right?
Yeah.
Commissioner comments?
We got planning commissioner comments. Now we got community development director's comments.
So I did send you all an email noting that Planning Commissioner Academy is coming up. It's April 4th through the 6th. I think that's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It's in Monterey. And two of you responded positively. Commissioner Sadowski, Commissioner Barone are interested in attending. And would, they haven't, they don't have the schedule up yet about the sessions, unfortunately. That's not done yet, but I'd like you guys to start thinking about it. If you're interested in going or attending, I'd like to get things booked so we do it before the hotel rooms run out and I have to pay extra to send you guys.
I'll be, I'll be interested in going, too. This is the first year I'm not teaching during that period.
Okay, great.
I thought it was incredibly useful last year, yeah.
What were the dates again, Scott?
It's April 4th through the 6th. So it's, again, it's Wednesday, Thursday, and you come home probably Friday. It's not a full-day thing, it's a half-day session on Friday typically.
You know, I would have to be a real strong maybe, you know, on this, and I'll let you, I'll let you know in a couple days.
That's fine, yeah, 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 that's great. Otherwise, I'll plan on booking it for everybody, probably do so at probably the end of next week or whatever. I was checking on my budget to make sure I was affording all of it, and it all looks good. And just got the report today, so that was a, that was a positive. I thought a few more of you might want to go than went last time, so I wanted to make sure I had resources, and I do, so, yeah.
My wife said I look smarter on TV after my break.
That's good, that's good, all right, I like that, yeah. So that's good.
Okay, money well spent.
I have a couple other, I have a couple other items. Like I mentioned, our, at the next meeting, you're going to have the development standards, a portion of the zoning code update module on the agenda. We're going to give it to you early.
Great.
You requested that, so we're going to, we're going to see if we can't finish everything up by the end of this week, maybe get it out to you Monday. So that's kind of what we're looking at. We might get it out Friday, just depending on when Cindy has her staff report done for Seashell Estates, which is also going to that meeting. I thought I'd let you know that's coming back, the Seashell Estates one. So that's all I had for you, just wanted to give you a fair warning and.
And Scott, when are we going to be getting into the downtown and embarked, or the commercial district design guidelines for?
That would be, that'll be after we're done with this. We're not going to write design guidelines into the zoning code.
Okay.
Okay? Because then you have to go to Coastal to change them.
Right.
So we want to have commercial design guidelines like we have residential design guidelines, right? We want to have standalone documents so we can review them, you know, every couple of years and make changes, get rid of things we don't like, that type of thing. And so I think we'd be doing that on the heels of the update, is kind of where we're at. Otherwise, we'll be using, you know, the new guidelines that we have out of the downtown water furniture strategic plan. We did adopt those, and so we'll be using those. Those are more than you've had in the past, and so we'll start with that and then build from there, I think. And then try to apply, you know, things throughout other commercial areas as well. So that's kind of how I see that playing out. We need to get done with the overall update first, though.
Okay.
Real quick, Scott, oh, you know, when we have that chart, and we had land use, we were supposed to be looking at land use from October to December of last year, are we?
We're done with land use. We've, we have the preferred land use map now. That's the preferred general plan land use map, that's done. And we're basing all of the plan Morro Bay on it. Plan Morro Bay is in administrative draft right now, reviewing the final tweaked version after we went up and talked to Coastal. And with any luck, I'll be done with that by the end of the week, and we'll send it up to Coastal along with our environmentally sensitive habitat policy and our affordable accommodations policy, which we also got input from them on. And then they're going to have it for a little while because the Plan Morro Bay document itself is almost 300 pages long with definitions, you know, that type of thing with it. So once we get it back from Coastal, we'll make those changes, and then we'll have a public draft, and that'll be going to G-PAC and then Planning Commission.
Oh, okay, so.
So I anticipate that G-PAC will see it in March, and then you'll see it right after that. So it's all coming at you. So, yeah, I mean, it's exciting if you get to the point where I've seen the whole document, it takes all that background material, that 1,200-ish pages of stuff, and then condenses it down. And you actually see the policies that come out of it, which is, which is kind of nice. And so you'll get to see that coming soon. But zoning code, next meeting, the development standards portion of it, which is one you should have great interest in. And G-PAC's looked at it, they weighed in, and we made some changes, and then that's what we're bringing back to you now.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll adjourn to the next regularly-scheduled Planning Commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street on February 6, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Thanks, thank you, everybody.